All right, good evening. We will call the special meeting, the North Whibley Pool Park and Recreation District, to order at 7:04 on Wednesday, October the 3rd. All commissioners are present tonight. The Golden Squeegee Award goes to... So, all commissioners are present, as is our director and his staff.
All staff.
All staff, all two of them. So, yeah, this just went sideways. So, the agenda, tonight we're gonna do an update on the Navy MWR contract by Rex. Thank you. The approval of the staff recommended fee schedule for temporary opening, discussion of that, and the viewing, the first viewing of the preliminary budget. Thank you for doing to Commissioner Singleton with last year's stuff to Rex. So, first order business. Rex, would you like to tell us?
Minutes.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm doing the minutes.
I'm sorry, we discussed it. Right before you walked in, I apologize. And Commissioner Merrill is doing the minutes. Yes, ma'am. Rex, would you please update us on MWR status?
Sure. Yeah, I talked with them two days ago, and they were eager to get back into the pool, and it's very similar to the agreement that we had. They're not, they're not doing the, so we're not, they're not, they are not supplying lifeguards. You know, that was the primary difference.
Okay. And when can we expect, did you, any dates, or?
They, they would be starting as soon as the gate on Monday and Wednesday.
So, what they wanted is a contract, just like they had before, where they would reimburse whenever there's swimmers come in, for lap swim and open swim, and they believed that they could have it ready to go through their procurement office next week.
What are they planning to put as their price? Could you talk about that?
We talked a little bit about it, but very similar to what it is, you know, it's a contractual agreement, so they're paying for it. The only difference is, what I think, the misconception is that people don't think they're paying, because when they come in, they don't see them distributing money, but they are paying, because we made note of that with the structure we have. So, we're reimbursed then by the Navy, according to the contract agreement.
Didn't they say something about they wouldn't go up the, at all from their fees for reimbursement?
Right.
It was pretty big.
I think the fees have always, correct me if I'm wrong, the fees have always been, what they can reimburse is the same, it's how they divide that up is the same. So, it's always been active duty, they try to keep it, so the active duty is always paid for, and then the dependents may have to pay, make up a difference, they only pay so much, and then the same with retirees.
Right.
Okay. So, it'll be pretty much the same fixed price, and how that's divvied out per dependence and retirees will change.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll know more about that next week, correct?
Yeah. Like we said, I was gonna say, what it was supposed to be was 10% of a ten punch card price, so make sure that we're not charging them too little.
So, this is the appendix for the price structure, based on our current contract with them, what lapsed at the end of September. And what they were reimbursing for active duty during AM time periods was 4.25, and we consider that the full fee, that was based on the ten punch card. And then for family members, 4.25, and then upon entry, the dependents were paying 75 cents. Retirees were paying 3.25 upon entry, so MWR was paying $1 of their admission. On the PM, for active duty and active duty family members for lap swim and the open swims, MWR was covering their full admission price, so there was no fee collected at the door. For retirees, we were collecting 2.50 at the door, and they were covering $1. So, they actually were not receiving a punch card rate in this contract.
So, they're paying more than the punch card rate, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For everything but the AM lap swim.
Everything but the AM.
So, is our, our expectation is it would be retroactive for last, for next week, other than Monday? So, if we get it signed on Thursday, it would be retroactive to Tuesday? Is that, okay. I mean, that's what, that's what we're expecting, so that for, the point being that for Navy folks, if they can wanna come in on Tuesday, that they'll have an understanding that, like, whatever, you know, that, that we're not gonna, lack of a better term, nickel and dime them at this point, we're just gonna kinda go with it. Is that our expectation, or?
I believe so.
Is it? Okay. So, we feel, okay, okay. But, I mean, I would assume it's a, it's a good taste, you know, effort, that we know it wouldn't start before the 9th. Right? I mean, 'cause on Monday, we would...
Well, the 9th will not open. Not open Tuesday.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Sorry. Well, effective the 9th, I mean, it doesn't, whatever, I mean, you understand my point, though. Okay. But the other, the other thing that I would just hope that we can do is, is kind of moving forward, is look at our contract performance, still gathering that. So, for example, we have a maximum, as I understand it, and if I, if I've got this wrong, please tell me, but we have a maximum reimbursement, and, and one of the things that I think we need to understand moving forward is, are we, are we exercising that full benefit? In other words, are we getting enough people in the pool that we're getting the maximum amount of dollars that, that we can get from the Navy? And if not, if it's, you know, we're at 40,000 out of 60,000, then, then what are we gonna do to pull those extra, to get more Navy swimmers in the pool, more, you know, families, more whatever it is? And, you know, so it would be really nice for us to understand over time. I know it would just be starting to gather it, but...
Well, we could actually go retroactive and look, because it is a separate line item in the PNL in detail, so we could pull that and look at that.
So, could we pull that in your spare time?
Right, exactly.
In your spare time, could, going forward, sometime now and as we go forward, can we look at that? Because one of the things we talked about as we looked at possible reopening, impossible new ways to do things in the future. And I think this is what Commissioner Singleton's alluding to, is that if there's a way, hey, we don't meet the full reimbursement, let's do a military, just like we do a Military Appreciation Day picnic down at Windjammer Park, let's do a Military Appreciation Weekend for retirees, active duty independents at the pool, and do our best to show our appreciation to them, while at the same time benefiting the district also. And that way, we get more, bring more people in to say, hey, wait a minute, I didn't know this resource was available to me. And maybe then, that'll also help their attendance and say, wait, you know, this is a great place to be, and it'll benefit not just the district, but all the district programs, too.
Absolutely. And they did mention that possibly using, like, some of our rental slots for some military activities, where they could use some of that reimbursement amount. So, that is on their radar ultimately.
Awesome. Further questions or comments to Director on the, all right? So, we'll move on to the second thing, the second agenda item, not the thing. Approval of the staff recommended fee schedule for temporary opening. Rex, you wanna talk about this, please?
Sir, what was that?
Uh, we're talking about the fee schedule, sir.
Do you wanna talk about it?
Oh, okay. Alternatively, because you know about the fee schedule?
So, what I provided for you guys is a copy of what the fee schedule was, and I'll turn it back over to you for a discussion of where you, what your thought process was for it.
Well, my thought process is that we are aware of what the fee schedule is, that we don't make any changes of it in it until after the levy. I just think it makes sense.
So, your suggestion here is to go with the past fee schedule? No, no increases or decreases until after we, after we win the levy, pass the levy? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that we approve of the staff recommended fee schedule for the temporary opening.
Okay. We have a motion to...
Second.
And I have a second. And I'm not taking notes. Discussion.
And, so, we're gonna, we're planning to keep the, the bigger price for the AM, and the reason we made that a bigger price was because someone could come in at 6:00 in the morning and stay all until the PM swim, or the afternoon swim, and that was why we made that more expensive. I'm kinda thinking, because as I recall, it's very limited times you can swim in the morning, so maybe we need to instead, while we're at limited hours, take that AM lap swim, wellness swim, and just not go there, just say lap swim and wellness swim.
Oh, make it the same all day long?
Yes. Because you're only gonna be able to come in for an hour or two each time, and so you're gonna pay the 3.50. That, to me, sounds, is more fair than, because, like I said, why we, we came up with the bigger price was because you could spend six hours in our lovely facility.
Come in the morning, pay the five, pay the 3.50 and stay all day.
Yeah.
And now, what we're looking at is, since we're only gonna be open for limited hours, you pay 3.50 or 5, 40 years?
I would say pay the 3.50 is what we've been, since we're gonna, if we're gonna maintain the same pricing, I'd say 3.50.
So, use the, use the PM for all day.
So, how many hours would they be able to stay with the 3.50?
It's, it's only during the open parts, and our, we have a very limited schedule that's like a couple hours early in the morning, a couple hours in the middle of the morning.
Well, if you have people that come from Langley or from Frehlin, and they have to drive up here and drive home, back for one hour, that, that's not good. So, is it going to be at least an hour, or because it takes you an hour just to shower and change?
Yeah, it'll be at least an hour, and it, there's no half hour times. And this is only initially, we have to build slowly back up, because we don't have enough lifeguards.
Yeah. No, I, I just wanna know, because I'm trying to recruit everyone for the levy, and most of the people that come from far away...
The people from Langley don't vote, so...
I know. I know, I know that.
But...
But they use the pool.
Yeah, the old harbor people.
So, I've been telling them it's going to open, and sure hope we are.
Yeah, and it is. It's just very limited initially hours. It was, it's gonna be, as I recall, it's like 6:00 to 7:00 for an hour in the early morning, and that's for...
I'm gonna go to Julie. Julie, do you know the hours right now that we proposed in the schedule?
So, the hours on the schedule, it's 8:00 to 10:00, Monday and Wednesday, for lap swim in the morning, so combined lap and wellness. We had initially had, I think, a 6:00 to 7:00 time block, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, for the Navy. That was under the thought process that they may be wanting to rent pool space, but that now, that is not happening. So, what Rex and I have talked about is, on Monday and Wednesday, expanding to open a little bit earlier, so we would be open like a three, three and a half hour time block those two mornings. So, we would probably open at probably 6:30 those days.
So, then we're kinda back where we started. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, since you, since you've changed what we agreed to last week, maybe we should stay, keep it at $5 for the AM swim, if someone can...
So, here's my question, and I understand where you're coming from with the scheduling, 'cause if you're active duty, or if you work on, on the base, 6:30, you're not gonna make work.
You're, you're...
So, 07 is generally the start time for most folks on base, unless you're an aviator, then it's, you know, come five minutes before you have to take off. So, that was my outside thoughts.
Really? Really? Yeah. That necessary? I don't think that was necessary.
No. So, but seriously, if we, if we open at 6:30, most of the folks on base...
Do you think 6 works? That was our original opening time until last week?
I think we, we might get more, more of the active duty and the personnel from the, the base that would be able to use the facility. I think if we wait till 6:30, we just won't get it.
I agree with you.
Because if I'm gonna come and swim for half an hour, right, and I can get, I can do, you know, 15, 1800 yards in a half an hour, I still need time to get out and at least do something before I run in to work.
Absolutely. So, that's actually why the schedule isn't quite out on the website yet. Carissa is supposed to be getting back to us with some information from our previous sign-in sheets about pool usage for active duty people. So, that's why I'm holding that a little bit, just a little bit longer, waiting to get back.
Okay. So, discussion about the AM. Commissioner Holly, you mentioned that maybe we should just keep it at 5?
If, now we're gonna have more hours, but I wouldn't go 6:00 to 10:00, because remember, we have to pay the lifeguard, so maybe 6:00 to 9:00.
Maybe, and the hard sell of that is you cut out a lot of people that, we were just having a conversation with a gentleman the other day, that, oh, I can take my littles to school, and I can have about an hour to come and get a swim in.
Yeah.
So, then we cut out a whole sector of people that way.
Parents.
Yeah.
With the school age.
Parents with elementary school age children.
We do. So, we, we should probably stick to 6:00 to 10:00, to meet both, both demographics.
You know what? And let's see, and if, if the pool's empty by 9:15, it's like...
Let me see.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
For the discussion on budget, yes, ma'am.
I now take back my comment, it's, I see, leave it at, leave it at the higher price, because someone could show up and spend four hours in the pool in the morning. There you go. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of things. I would like it if we would bound this by December 31st. I think it behooves us to, even, even if we decide that we could keep it the same next year, for a period of time next year, if we could, I think it behooves us to take a look at what, so, so basically, once we, so, so assuming obviously they would pass the levy, and then we, we're having that discussion, because that's what is gonna happen, we're gonna have to look at, based on the budget, what the lane hour, you know, basically what our recovery, it will be based on how we calculate our lane hours and, and those costs. And so, for us, I think it'll make sense for us to, in the November, December timeframe, look at these numbers again. If we feel like we can move forward with them the way they are, that's fantastic, but if we feel like we can't, so I'd ask for a change of an expiration of 12/31. Secondly, or two, two things that I think need to be on here that aren't, one is the party rental rates. We have those on the schedule, so we need to have those as part of this document as well. And additionally, the, I think we need to put the lane hour rental price here as well. So, that was something that in the past, that, you know, one of the things I know I've heard here is, is we need to be sure that if anyone's renting lane time, that it's, it's comparable with the high school. And that, so it would be, it would make sense for us to publish a price, so that it's the same for anybody and everybody.
Which I'm not sure what that number is. I know that you guys wanna jot it down, but this one is 1.50 for party rental, and private is 2.25.
Okay, so, my question, if I may, about lane rentals. My concern there is, if I look at the high school, they bring their own lifeguards, but if we have somebody that wants to rent a lane that doesn't bring their own lifeguards, and, you know, other groups like the Blue Hands, they bring their own lifeguards, high school brings their own lifeguards, but if we have a group from the Navy, or anywhere else, that doesn't bring their own lifeguards, how do we offset that cost with a lane rental? Because that's kinda what we take into consideration with, with the high school and with other groups, and so, I think we need to, yeah, also take that into consideration, too.
And that would be, then there would be two rates, right?
Yeah.
And it would, you know, one would be with a qualified lifeguard, the other one would be without, you know, and it, and obviously, when you're, when you're reserving that space, the discussion is happening about like, oh, no, we've got really good swimmers, like, no, that's not what we're talking about.
Right.
You know, and so, like, here's what we need to see in order for you to get this rate, or whatever. I mean, is that, is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just, I feel like we would be better off if we, if we published those rates, because it's consistent.
Yes.
I think that I would add to that, that we publish the rates, including a lifeguard, and then you can give them, you know, if they don't need the lif, yeah, because I think most, you know, you want, first of all, I think you wanna use your own lifeguards, because you know that, you know that they're certified, and...
Yes.
Whereas letting them, some, them bring in somebody whose lifeguard and...
Well, no, they would, they would have to, you would have to see some, yeah, documentation. It wouldn't just be like, no, really, he's wearing the red shirt, you know?
Oh, okay. You know what I mean? Like, you gave him a whistle, like, right? Like, it's close to that, like, I mean, but I think it's a good point that you raised that, that it's, you know, this is, includes lifeguard or whatever, and then it's like, oh, yeah, we don't need that. Oh, okay, then it, right.
I, that's not a bad point, yeah.
Yeah.
And we can just include that, and, you know, as we look at the, a group or a contract, just, we can look at what they have in depth, and I think that's not a problem.
Yeah. Anytime someone did come and grab their own lifeguard, we would have to have copies of their certs on file here anyway, so we would have that verification.
Okay. Further discussion, then, before we pass on, I think that December 31st is good for two reasons, and it binds us to this budget year, which we, we should look at this before we do our proposed budget, which is the next item on here, anyway, but that would go along with our proposed budget for next year, and so I think that, that only makes sense to bind this till December 31st of this year. Further discussion.
So, is anyone gonna change their motion?
Yeah, I will, I will amend my original motion, that we adopt Commissioner Singleton's recommendation with the expiration date and the party rentals.
Do I have a second for the amendment?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to the final agenda item, which is the viewing of Commissioner Singleton's preliminary budget suggestions.
Before you do that, could I just say something?
Well, technically, you're not allowed, but please go right ahead.
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone for working really, really hard. I see some familiar faces, but I use the pool all the time, and I have really met a lot of interesting people and had a fun time. So, I just want, I just wanna say thank you to all of you very, very much, and especially Julie, because I used to see and check in with her and give her my money.
I still have her locker number.
Julie is one of my faithful tireless volunteers, and she just...
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Very sincere. A lot, a lot of people don't say thank you, but they tell me, oh, yeah, my kids miss the pool, and I thought, yeah, they make a lot of water and splashes to me.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Singleton, I will pass the time to you, ma'am.
Okay, sure, so I get to, I get to, I get to follow the delightful one.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for that, with a budget, for that matter, which everybody else, okay, so, and I, hopefully you were able to read my message, but, but the intention here is to just, one, try to get this process kicked off, and so, by no means do I expect, unless, unless there are things that people want to talk about, that we're gonna go through eight pages. I just don't see the point right now. My aim is, so, so we've had a lot of questions about, so, what are you gonna spend the money on? And, and so, to me, even a, hey, it's kinda like this, the, for me, it's really about the major buckets, more than anything, and so, I, I refer to it in my message as legacy, legacy operations, and that just kinda means anything we, we have done before, and that's kinda, so, what is on our standard P&L? And, and I, you know, I know I put some assumptions in here, there was just stuff where I was like, oh, and then I was, you know, so there, so there's lots of really fun stuff in there, but what I was trying to do was, so, so there are things where I accounted for things like replacement items, for things like aerobics, that, you know, that there are certain accounting for that. We don't, again, we could, we could go through all these today, I'm not sure that there's a point unless everybody wants to, but like, I've done, like, assumed replacement equipment. So, for example, in 2017, we spent $70 on aquatics equipment, I have 600, because part of it is, is looking at, hey, there are things that are probably due for replacement. I, I know based on the amount of garbage that went out of here today, that, that is in fact true, that there are things that are due for replacement, that like, ooh, that thing is beat. Same with aerobic supplies, you know, that there are some things, and so there's some accounting for those things there, but what I wanted to try to do is use our P&L, make a couple of adjustments that I, I felt like were mostly fair. I'm not assuming everyone's gonna agree with all of them, and, and I certainly wanted to get something in front of Rex that he could look at, he can refine and say, this is what I think I can do, because we know, you know, that's his responsibility, he, he wants to own that, and I, I certainly want to. But, what, so what I did was, kinda took all that and said, where does that get us? And it, it got us, and so, again, making, making these revenue assumptions based on 2017, and, and kinda what I did there was try to keep the revenue flat, even though we know we weren't open the whole year, keep it flat for that, and then certain expenses inflate them, so again, it might even be a little off balance, but toward the expense side, to try to be conservative, so that, so that if nothing else, we're hopefully surprised by having more money than we thought we had. You know, that's, that's the, and then the other thing that I did, sorry, on the first page was, I just, I assumed, since we're asking for 20 cents versus 17, I just assumed property assessment's the same, because it isn't, it isn't relative to the amount you would sell your house for, the assessment is not the same thing, and so the appreciation is not the same thing. So, so I went with what we received in 2017 and, and increased that by 17, by 17%, right? But, so what I did, and so then it came out with, hey, we've got this much money left over, and so this is, I'm on page eight right now, so, so those things were all like legacy operations, and then what I was trying to do was figure out where the big buckets are, the big, you know, so, so where did, so the first one being legacy operations, everything we needed to do what we already used to do. And then, so going through, and so what I tried to do was say, okay, so maintenance, well, reserves at 40,000, ultimately, 10% would be great, but we know we have a lot we wanna do, so looking at at least, at least this amount, and that's about 6%, 40,800. Improvements, I put at the exact same amount, and so what, how I define an improvement is something that is either a substantial upgrade, or like, you know, new equipment, new programs, the dry programs, et cetera. So, I think it's kind of an, anything that kinda doesn't, it's, it's not routine maintenance, and it's not trying, you know, it's, it's something that we wanna make this thing better, or it's new, is, is kinda how I try to say improvement. And I put less parts, because, so, what I put, because the landowners are there, I put 5,000 for the dock park, and 10,000 for the ball field, because we know that they have a long list of things they want to do, and, and I think we wanted to hopefully commit, and again, I know the board has to decide on this, but, but we wanted to hopefully be better partners to them, and in both, in both cases. So, so that improvements would be 40,800 when you total that up, and then maintenance, and so that meaning, so the other kinda routine maintenance that was already in our budget is still in that, in that operate, legacy operations piece. So, we need to fix this thing, or, you know, you know, these things, the chemicals, and, you know, lots of, most of the routine-ish stuff, this 75,000 would be intended for major projects, so things off of our comprehensive maintenance plan, that hopefully we might find someone to look at and up, and update, because it's, I mean, it's, it's decent, but we, it probably needs an update, just saying, just, I wasn't making out with anybody, but, well, maybe I was. No, but we, but so, and that would be $75,000 to do that next year, and we would have to go through, and I think ideally, we would sit down with, these are all the things on the plan, what's on year 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and, and then we'd have a good idea. Things are gonna happen that are gonna change those things, but that's when you take that plan, and you go, okay, so this is moving up here, this can move out here, and, you know, or, hey, guess what, we have way more money than we thought, and, and so we're gonna do this many more things now, you know, but, but that we're kinda moving things around, and we have a good strategic idea of not only when they're going to be done, but how we're going to pay for them. You know, this fits into our budget, and therefore, it needs to be part of our budgeting process, right? So, I realize that was a lot, but, but really, all I'm looking for is kind of like either questions or a general consensus, if you feel like you can give it, if you can't, talk to me about why not, for these major buckets. That's all I'm looking for right now. And again, it's not, it's actually not just for me, it's for any of you that get asked the same question, what are you gonna do with money?
Every day.
Right, I mean, and that's the thing, is people, you know, we, we have a segment of voters who I think would, would absolutely be, and I, I hope so, would be yes voters, they just want to understand what we're spending the money on.
So, first off, once again, thank you for doing this. This, this provides two things. One, like you said, what we promised the voters, and some of our support, big supporters going forward, that we would give them this. Two, it gives the new guy without much, you know, not much time in the saddle, it gives you something to go on, you know, it gives you a place to start. um, it gives you something to go on, you know, um, it gives you a place to start, um, and it gives us all a, like I said, a sounding board to, to work from. I will apologize for getting this in a short timeframe, I, I didn't see any buckets that I didn't have questions on, it looked like a sound plan to start with. Questions or comments from most of the board?
Um, I, I firmly believe that we can get very close to these numbers without increasing rates, um, in regard to the major buckets, so I think that's a very good thing. Um, some of the things I'd look to on here, which was, uh, like the assumptions of the boiler, uh, being twenty percent higher. I think fuel might boil a little more, but I feel like in the back room that we've learned how to make the boiler way more efficient, and that right there starts to put money in the reserves. So, I, I think that, I mean, I think I could sit here and say that, you know, the, the big buckets here on the final page, you know, with the reserves and the improvements, maintenance, total expenses, I think that, I think that those are all relatively close to being indicative of what the final numbers will be, and I really think we can get there without raising the rates. I think, I really think after pulling this off, I think, I think our attendance is going to jump, I think, I mean, it's going to jump vaguely for a while, but I, I, I think our numbers are going to stay up for here on out. I bet I've heard two hundred and fifty people in the last month, I didn't know if ever had a pool. I don't know how that's possible, but anyway, get off your phone, kids, there is a pool in Oak Harbor. So I, I'm, I'm, like I said, I, I think that's close to, close to what it'll end up looking like on the final page at least.
Well, I just have two minor questions. Since I'm not in the Navy, I don't know, I don't go by initials, so what is BHBC? Clover Valley Park. Okay, that makes sense. And how do we get money from Clover Valley Park? Do the baseball teams pay?
We've done rentals in the past. Um, the team has paid minimal, but they mostly pay, the way they pay is they take care of the parks for us.
Right.
So we really don't charge them a lot. Rentals on weekends, and, um, then we've had the county also give us some money for the, for the park usage and so on, so...
Paper is paid whatever they paid last year, plus did maintenance, little paid six hundred eighty-five dollars or something for fall wall, and there was a few other rentals.
We don't make a lot of money.
Yeah, no, I, I see it's not a lot of money, but it's, it's some that I didn't know we had.
I think the hope is that with the investment that it would be used even, you know, it would be used even more, you know, part of what, and I know we were all here for it, but part of the discussions about, you know, the things that they want to do, like basically in, in, you know, expanding it so that, that there can be more level of play, um, things like, and, you know, this is probably a longer term thing, but things like, so, the, the wiring so that it can be, we can have lights at night. I mean, there's just things that will expand not only their usage of it, but our usage of it as well, and, and drive, I think, that number up as well.
I liked all of your, um, estimates and agree that it needs to be conservative, just because we never know what's going to happen, but I, I thought this was a really good first
Rex, questions, comments to the board about the proposal? Can you work with this? Is this something to go forward with? And I would say, um, obviously, there's a great place to start with questions. Commissioner Singleton did all the work, don't look around. And, um, she, she will have, you know, a, a good basis to go to to ask those questions, and then please ask any of us, ready for the questions. I know it's going to be tough. Um, we do have to have our budget in by December to the county.
Isn't it, isn't it like the end of November?
It's the end of November.
November thirtieth?
Yes, so I, I think we can do December the first, but Sheila gets, uh, upset if we wait that long, so we want to have it in by the end of November. So we are going to have to, and, once again, with all your time, spare time, we're going to have to put this together, so...
So do we need to pass it, are we going to have a special pass of any, or will we pass it in our last, that meeting?
I would say, before we get too far off track, I would say we need to add this to the agenda to our, I think we'll add the budget as a review item to our agenda for upcoming regular meeting, and from there, and from there we can move, if we need to have a special meeting for the budget or not, we can determine that in the morning, since there's some time between now and then. Agreeable?
Wouldn't, sorry, I mean, we would, we would need to meet in at some point in November, right?
Yes.
Because it, we can't really submit a budget.
Exactly.
Until we know how much more money, well...
But we're going to have to wait for that first week to go by anyway.
That was my point.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, okay, I didn't know it was just kind of a bit Easter egg for me there.
No.
Oh, yeah.
We've got to wait for that first week once we pass the levy, so...
What day is our regular meeting?
And when?
On, in November.
It's the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week.
Tuesday, okay.
We're so fun.
Thank you. All right, so that's all that's on the agenda tonight, so I need a motion for adjournment.